I'm starting now.
Good evening, welcome to the North Rose Woolkit School Board of Education meeting tonight. Please stand. I will entertain a motion please for approval of the agenda. Linda and Paul, discussion? All in favor? Motion is given. Mr. Poland, would you like to introduce tonight's presentations?
Absolutely, so we're gonna start off first with welcoming Erin Youngman up to present to us. Erin is a fantastic young lady, she's a member of the class of 2023. There she is back there smiling. You may recall that Erin's been an integral part of our strategic action plan. She sat on that committee a few years ago with us. She's a member of our choir, she's a student who attends Wayne Tech and Career Center, I believe, Education Professions, is that correct? And I believe two weeks ago she saved me. She sang the alma mater, which was great because her voice is much better than mine, and the people in the audience appreciated that greatly. So Erin, I'm gonna turn it over to you and let you speak to the board and let them know what's happening here at the high school. Thank you.
Well, good evening, everyone, I'm Erin Youngman. As you just heard, I go to Wayne Tech and Career Center, I've been there for two years for my junior and senior year. I currently attend the education program there. As I said, I've been there for two years. I go there currently for Education Professions, and I love it there, it's great. My teacher, she's wonderful, she helps us with our internships, she helps us with anything they need. You go there if you want to be a teacher, if you want to be a doctor, a nurse, anything, they have plenty of opportunities for you there. I'm a member of the Student Council there, I'm the secretary. I go to an internship two days a week, so if you'd like to learn more about that and be willing to, that's available. My future plans currently are to be an educator, to be a teacher. So that program will really help me out.
Wonderful. Board members, do you have questions or want to call?
Yes, I would like to have you expand on the internship. You say you have an internship twice a day, twice a week?
Twice a week, yes, I go on Wednesdays and Thursdays every morning to preschool classroom by Mrs. Copeland, and I work there from, let's see, eight oh, eight oh three to eleven one five.
Great, thank you.
No problem.
It's kind of late and I was thinking you're probably able to have more than one internships to go have a range of experiences?
Yes, yes, you can choose any grade level you want. I chose pre-K for two years, and then pretty soon we're gonna have the second internship this year. And don't know where I'm going currently, but I can choose any, any grade level I want.
Thank you, it's delightful to hear someone of your caliber say you would like to go into education and become a teacher. That's grand. And it sounds like your experiences are confirming that's exactly what's right for you.
Yes, that's true.
That's great, thank you. Anyone else?
I just wanna say one last thing, Erin, we really do appreciate your involvement. And I know with the high school, they're presenting their school improvement plan tonight. My hope is that you and the other student body members who participated with the Strategic Action Planning Committee see the fruits of your labor, and I think that that gives you some unique perspective going into the profession. So thank you, and I wish you luck with the remainder of your internship in Mrs. Copeland's class and for selfish reasons. I hope you stay in North Rose Woolkit for your second internship because we wanna continue to watch you grow and learn and look forward to someday maybe offering you a position here. So thank you and good luck next Thursday night for the concert.
Thank you very much.
All right, thanks for doing this, honey.
Of course.
So without any delay, I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Bradley and his school leadership team as they present the fall school improvement plan. So Scott, go way ahead.
All right, thank you, Mr. Poland, and thank you to the board for allowing us to present an update tonight of our school improvement plan. I'd like to start just by having our team members introduce themselves to you.
Good evening, everybody, Brandon Kapsinski, high school elementary teacher.
Hi, Adam Hawley, I teach 12th grade Social Studies.
How do I make this English progress by teaching Spanish and the social coaching high school?
Hi, Amber Lanley, I'm a student and apprentice.
We have a great team here, really fortunate to work with them to a close length capacity. Our school improvement plan is developed to support the district's mission and vision, which is ultimately to prepare students for whole secondary life, whether that's college, career, or the military. Work so that they can reach their full potential and find success when they leave NRO. Our plan is informed by sets of data, an important set is the Regents' data. June of 2022 saw Regents' exams return in full for the first time since prior to the pandemic, with the exception of our U.S. History exam. It's important for us to look at progress over time, and so we wanna share some of that with you. To look back at 2019, you can see what our passing in mastery rates were for Regents' exams. As you can see there, we only achieved our target of ninety percent proficiency in one area, which was living fire. In June of 2022, the state recognized that many students had not taken Regents' exams before, and they were understanding that there were sure to be gaps that existed because of alternative learning models that were in place during the pandemic. In response to this, the state offered what was called a special appeal. Special appeal was for students who passed the course, who didn't necessarily pass a Regents' exam, but they earned at least a score of fifty. If a student met those criteria, the teacher could make a recommendation, and then there was a committee who gave final approval to give students credit for the Regents' exam. All that to say, the third column of this chart shows students who received Regents' credit by either passing the exam or minimally earning a special appeal by getting a score of fifty and passing the course. So when looking at that data, you can see that clearly math is an area that needs attention and focus for us. And then my belief is that the mid-year transition of instructors had an impact on achievement in COVID too, but it's definitely something that we'll keep an equal eye on.
So our first goal here is partnerships, and again, we're continuing to focus on building those relationships with students, families, and local organizations. We're continuing our work with outside agencies to support our community. We work closely with the Wayne County Action Program, the Wayne County Department of Mental Health, the Wayne County Sheriff's Department. We also collaborate with the Rotary and Woolkit Legion. We work closely with colleges around the area to provide campus visits for our students. Recently, we worked with Saint John Fisher, Hotsdale, Oswego, Can, Huka, Lumboy, Niagara. We participated in the Rochester area college visit. We have career exploration opportunities for students to study work. We've allowed multiple guest speakers and worksite tours, at Marshalls for the worksite tours. We had our attorney come in and talk about DASO with our staff. We had a few folks from Beloved Chromosome coming at the beginning of the year, and most recently, we had Officer Coletti come and talk to our students about cybersecurity. And continuing to offer opportunities for parents and families to visit the high school. Beginning of the year, we had orientation, we've had open houses and parent teacher conference nights, many athletic contests, the animal spitting musical, which brought in, we sold about six hundred tickets, so that brought in a lot of families, and a lot of other extracurricular activities.
As a building, we realized that, you know, if there are gonna be ninety seniors graduating, they're gonna have ninety paths after graduation. So when it comes to equity, how do we offer everything to every student knowing that they're all gonna take their own path? And so we are doing a lot of things at the school and hopefully more events here to try to brand the school as a hub for the community, and you know, with some celebrations and branding the school as a center for communication, education, and celebration. We also have students create their own transition plans and preparing them for careers and doing some studies in that manner so that when they are out after graduation and they're all on their own path, they're maybe a little more prepared for the increased responsibility that comes with that. We're also working to celebrate the extracurricular activities, creating more of them, including a few new clubs and things like that, to really kind of reach students that maybe didn't or wouldn't have taken part in extracurriculars before. There are a few new clubs that have been created to kind of target students that maybe didn't feel that sense of community. And then doing other things to kind of really build that community pride. Because we realize that with ninety-eight hundred seniors leaving the school, some of them are gonna go very far away and some of them won't come back. Others are gonna be here in ten years, in twenty years, in thirty years. They're gonna be the same students that come in when we do parent-teacher conferences in the future. And how do we build the school as that positive start that they had? And you heard Erin, we may even have some students graduating and end up working for the district. So as far as the equity piece goes, we're really just trying to offer every student everything we can to, as they take their own path, how do we help them remember North Rose Woolkit in positive light? Thanks.
Along with that, we have social-emotional learning, we also sometimes do this SDL. We've been focusing this year on providing a welcome and affirming environment for students, staff, and families every day that they attend North Rose Woolkit High School. Our fall parent-teacher conference was a great success. It was very well attended as the staff worked really hard to try to get as many families as we could to come in. Just one example of a warm and welcoming environment that we tried to provide for that night was during a freshman meeting. We knew ahead of time that there was a family member whose English was not their first language, so it was arranged to have a translator to provide a meeting. And then also, the mother brought a small child, and it was pretty awesome to see just in the moment one of the staff members goes, "I have some toys, I'll bring them in." So the family was able to communicate and understand, and then also have the child engaged. We could have a great conversation together, it was really impressive. Furthermore, we've been utilizing resorted conversations when appropriate this year between students and students, and then students to staff as well. And then as for service learning, fifty-three seniors were able to spend an afternoon cleaning York-Salomon Cemetery, which was an amazing way for them to get back to the community. And we're planning another product like this in the spring. And then lastly, we've been explicitly teaching our Cooper values each month to our students. Through a club called SKECA, students have enjoyed coming up to activities with a student body to celebrate each value of each month. For example, this past month, our focus was on optimism. The students came up with a slogan of...
Here comes the sun, optimism.
And they worked, they did. And we've together worked with the kids on ways to show students how to be more optimistic in their life because upon asking, a lot of the students didn't actually aware of what optimism meant. So that was fun. We also celebrated students and staff who exemplify the target monthly values. We do that every single month, and we do that with the students and the staff members, with students, staff, and the work of month, awards. Thank you.
Our fourth goal is focused on academics. Ninety percent of students graduate with their core work, ninety percent of students score a proficient Regents' exam and then increasing our mastery by fifteen percent from last year. To do that, our NTSS and Tier Two teams have been reflecting on and analyzing processes and practices to ensure that we're supporting students academically, attendance, behavior, and those social-emotional needs. There've been multiple opportunities as well to collaborate with other buildings to ensure that we have consistent practices. A lot of work was put into finalizing curriculum maps and atlas, and having these documents is allowing us to look at and assess how our curriculum aligns standards, fill in any gaps that we noticed, and then allow us to engage in meaningful conversations vertically within departments. Our Cooper Ops program is evolving, and with several new staff additions this year, we've been able to reach more students, take a multifaceted approach, and come up with new and creative ways to intervene with and support students earlier in their academic career.
So for financial, our goals with the responsibilities of funds initiative, we've been trying to put the great money that we could give into the best use. I don't know if you had a chance to look in the small cafeteria, there's all new seating in there, nice different shapes, some are French seating, some are round, so it makes it a lot nicer and closer. And Alhouse makes it easier for us to monitor the students. We have detective tables coming for the courtyard. I don't know if you guys are aware of Cooper Card, which is a program that's up. Students, we have Cooper cards and a nice way to be able to sit out there, board seating, it's really nice. We have a strong ability, we have all the signs, as green was cool color, Cooper Matt's got on there, which is nice. During the parent-teacher conferences before, we had some issue with navigation, so we had a lot of good feedback. People said it was easier to navigate the building with them. Some of the classrooms have been flexible seating, which means a lot of students can't really rearrange the room, but we're seating around to make students be able to collaborate individually. We also have this old ALC group, Flyroom. So we have our secretary being able to kind of monitor that as a checklist, sort of, we have all the needs that kind of settle our roster and our budgets.
Thank you for the opportunity to present. We'd be happy to entertain any questions.
I'm delighted to hear all you're doing with the, with getting the building to be a community school. At the New York State School Boards Association convention, that was something that they talked about a great deal. And for those of you who aren't aware of what all that is, it's making more use of your school for the whole community and positive, in positive things to do for not only students, but for the community as a whole. And considering that the school is, is a, has the facilities that people have already paid for, it just makes perfect sense to build it into a hub of action for everybody. So I'm really pleased to hear that. Anyone else? Paul?
This is either for Cap or Adam, I'm not sure which is most appropriate, but we talked about collaboration with some of the local businesses. For example, I've heard Marshall Pharmacy, whether it's, or any other that can be expanded and, or definitely used.
You mean like as far as work partners and stuff like that?
Exactly.
So we're fortunate to be able to have a relationship with this aid organ program where a lot of students will work with the whole quarantine building. And then Mr. Matthews and his new role has really been able to facilitate a lot of work placements for students who are looking for those, Marshall's a full example. But that's a natural program, and we're finding more and more places for students who are looking for. This year, I think, I think they placed about seventeen students in jobs so far this year.
Great.
Because I have the seniors, I'm also aware of a lot of the internships that OCE sets up for them. So I've got a handful of students that are already doing internships this early in their senior year at local fabrication shops, machine shops, and some of them are already set up with full-time jobs after they graduate. So if one student in particular spends three days a week in the mornings at that machine shop and is kind of chomping at the bit to be done with school earlier because he's gonna have substantially more hours when he graduates. So having the resources of Wayne Tech and Career is a beautiful lesson to students who may, who definitely know the path they wanna go, but may not know the right people at this point.
Thanks, Adam.
Maybe this is a question for, I don't know, Mr. Poland, but are we, am I gonna make this, is there an assumption that there's going to be a presentation on the Cooper Ops program?
There is gonna be a presentation on Cooper Ops, I believe that's slated for February.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Then I do have one other question, that when I think about the impact that COVID had on the district and for many students, and I think about just instructional practice, are you finding as teachers that you're really having to look at your instructional practices and having to, to kind of rethink your practice?
Yeah, I think definitely it's not just where folks Woolkit is all over then. I think we're finding that students have different needs than maybe they had pre-pandemic. So that's the cool part that our district offers instructional coaches in every single building, that we're able to work with staff one-on-one in any areas. Mr. Bradley and I do a lot together to brainstorm and talk about different trends we're seeing in the building. And like he'll talk with me about some things, I'll talk with him about some things. We're really able to really attack some things that we think can best help create our students' success. And the staff is really awesome because they are very flexible and not just accepting it as, this is how it is. Let's see what else we can do to help create our students to success, so.
Thank you. John?
A question about the appeals process, will that be part of this year's process as well?
Yeah, that will go through this year as well. They slated, they scheduled it through August of 2023.
Under the same criteria, I reckon?
Yes.
That could be positive or negative. In the minds of the teachers, was there a huge difference in Regents' exams from nineteen to twenty-two? Did they change, they meaning the SED, change the quality of the test questions?
Are you asking about the rigor of the question?
Yes.
They kept the same rigor for nineteen and twenty-two.
Okay, so, so the teachers would be, would say that these scores would be aligned in a relevant way? In other words, if these same kids went back to 2019 before COVID, they would be under those scores, to be realistic?
So I'm gonna jump in on that one. What I think is, so I don't know if the scores are realistic in comparison from 2022 to 2019. What I would say to you is that the fact that the rigor was still intact and it did not account for the gaps in instruction or the delay to day-to-day interaction with our staff is certainly evident by those scores. And I mean, the one piece that we've pushed this particular team on is to really look at the Monday through Friday rigor in their classroom this year and do a better job of giving me an accurate description of what our students are capable of doing versus what they're able to do on a standardized test. The measure once a year is important, don't get me wrong, but I don't think the state took enough time to account for that gap in instruction. And I don't think any of us are satisfied with the results from the Regents', and we did utilize the appeal process. And there's a lot of conversation going on now at the state level as to whether Regents will continue to exist in New York, which when Betty Rosa was the chancellor for the Board of Regents, she introduced that concept, and now it's starting to pick up more momentum. And I don't know, to piggyback on your comment, I don't know if that's a good or a bad thing. What I would suggest is our state really emphasize more options for our student body members like we used to have years ago, with local diplomas and Regents' diplomas, and allowing students to pursue an avenue that was best suited for them. And I think Adam spoke to that tonight about saying ninety graduates with ninety individual pathways, and I believe that's where our state really should focus, is give individual students the opportunity to create an individualized education plan, not atypical for some of our students, but for all students. And I think that that really, if we were able to do that as a state and as a local institution, we would be far better served. So I think that that's my own two cents on the rigor piece because again, the gaps have been significant, the emotional impact, the academic impact. No adjustment on the state level just shows the bias that they've been talking about all along with the assessments.
I agree. Thank you.
I think the other thing that I'm always stunned with is the number of people at different levels of the educational system or the political system who are very surprised that it made a difference either giving a full-time teacher or a full-time teacher or being from alone, and they're kind of surprised. And I think anybody who has anything to do with kids knows that one-on-one is exactly what kids need, and without it, this happens. Thank you very much.
Can I ask you a couple more questions?
Yep, sure, Paul.
That's right, that's right. One more question, you mentioned student to student, student to staff conversations.
Yep, so, yeah, so with our restorative conversations, conversations sometimes, sometimes we find that as adults, sometimes the conversation needed work or not at all the student, but students to students helping to figure out some maybe issues we're having. The staff are always present to help guide those conversations, but instead of the staff members trying to solve it, it's putting the kids together and trying to help guide them through those conversations together in hopes of finding a solution to their problems that they're having. And that's a whole piece called restorative conversations. And it's very powerful, and it's a bit really useful, but when they do leave school, you know, not to always have an adult present, but the adult to say, "This is what you should do, and that's to learn together."
I understand, I remember Scott, you talked about two restorative conversations happened for what, like the last few, two years? Yeah. Good, hey, thanks. Now, Scott, one last quick question. I noticed this was Scott talking about the Regents' system.
We don't currently have a certified teacher for the students who wants to challenge themselves, to be able to do lots due to each other, each program. But my program, there's a lot of self-reduction. They've been, they're gonna study all, actually, with Amber, they get support. Scott's part of that certification, and so she knew how to work that itself, and that's why I all have them online.
Great, thank you.
Thank you very much, very important.
Thank you. So I wanna start off by, just before I get into my presentation, thanking the high school team and acknowledging the work that they're putting forth. And that's a very talented group of collect, or very talented collective group of people. So we appreciate their commitment to our kids and our community very much. I also wanna start off by apologizing to the Board of Education and the community for our response to Monday's bus accident. I feel like we did a terrible job in many different ways with how we responded to the scene. I think that there were a lot of positives that came out of it, and people thought and acted on the fly. But that incident exposed some procedural things that we lacked, and it also exposed some vulnerabilities in terms of us having certain measures in place, and I was certainly in some responsibility for that. One point in particular was the delay in communication out to our families that we're not proud of. So I want to offer my apology to you as a representative of all of you, and I want to apologize to our community for how that unfolded. We will get better, and we did debrief Monday night and talked about a lot of things that should have been in place prior to us having an incident like that. Again, the personnel that responded did a great job with the issue at hand, so I don't wanna take away from the staff's efforts Monday night. want to take away from the staff's efforts Monday night. As we head into the holiday season and the first quarter, you know, we had a lot of success academically with our interscholastic teams. So Mr. Blankenburks in the gymnasium now, we have a contest going on, but I'm pleased to report on his behalf that all of our fall teams were recognized as scholar athletes. And if you look at those grade point averages across the board, boys volleyball really needs to do a better job, pretty good academic. I'll put, we're going to talk to Mr. Han about that, that 90.21, you know, he's really letting us down a little bit, and obviously say that facetiously, but we're really proud because our student athletes, you know, really have to master a lot of different things. Several of our student athletes are active in many other endeavors, whether it's the fall musical that we had this year, working a part-time job for other community-based organizations. That's something to be quite impressed with. You know, we also had a very successful musical. It's four months earlier than usual because this particular facility will be under construction. So, you know, we had their really taking this to swim. I worked on a lot of things in a short order, so a testament to Herb and Miss Johnson for what they were able to achieve under some pretty extraordinary circumstances. And as you heard, there were 600 seats sold, so over the three-day weekend, that's quite impressive. Last, last week, we were made aware that Dan Davis, one of our school bus drivers, actually published a book. So we're looking forward to actually hearing more about the Flight of Oscar, which is rooted in the story of a mouse could not fly with desire to be airborne. I did actually see Mr. Davis on Monday night, graduated him for his effort. Just a very genuine and humble man, was pretty excited to actually have this book out, and there's a copy of it in our elementary school already. And I did let him know we would be supporting him and purchasing more for our elementary library. So that's pretty impressive when you think about the various backgrounds our staff come to us with every day. This is from last Friday. We got up on the high school roof, so Phase 1 of our 2021 capital project is almost complete. Beautiful view of our campus on that all-may 45-degree day. Our roof is in phenomenal shape. The company, Elmer Davis, did a wonderful job for us and really took something. And as I said to their vice president, who was on campus with us last week, it's remarkable to think about that roof in its prior condition and how old it was, because it was 30 years old, and the way their team tackled that issue. Weather tightened in December when they initially thought that it would take us until February to be done with the high school roof and the maintenance building. The maintenance building is almost completed. They have some metalwork and flashing to finish up. Again, they've been like gangbusters, so we're really pretty pleased with that. And our, our facility's planning review is still underway in terms of Phase 2 and 3, but our hope is that by the end of next week, we'll have an answer on permitting and then really start escalating the process for this to pull out and get our work started on Phase 2 and 3 of that capital project. Lastly, I just want to highlight something for you with the board initiative and, and just say what a remarkable success to date this is. We have 42 students in the elementary school participating in instrumental band. You know, so do you think six months ago, we didn't have this? You know, we, we as a Board of Education and administration committed to providing our community with instruments at no cost to our students. The only thing we asked for them was sweat equity in the form of taking care of the instruments, making sure that they were well cared for, and that the students were engaged. And again, I think 42 out of 44 available slots are filled. We've even had some parents go past so far as to purchase their children's instruments so that other students who don't have the same opportunity can use the school stuff. And last night, we were at the middle school concert, several of us were there, if not all of you saw a phenomenal output from our, our middle school musical program. But I think in a matter of a few short years, you're really going to see our instrumental music, your vocal music programs being back to where they once were. And I also feel like our academic performance will go up because we all know that studies show the more engaged our students are with extracurriculars at school, the better the academic output. So I just thought you should see the fruits of your labor and those smiling faces say it all. And the young man with the trombone there, really proud of his participation, and I think he's got an older brother that performed last night in the percussion section, so it's something that I anticipate his younger brother will participate in in a few short years. So that's it for my portion, and I do want to say a lot of good things happening. We do still have lunges, obviously, that we have to work out. There are a lot of good things happening here at North Rose Woolkit. Are there any questions or comments? Okay, thank you.
Do you want the other one to be pulled?
Which one?
Rob.
Oh, yes, if you want to show that. Actually, I will tell you, show you one last thing because it never hurts that good news. So this was on today's broadcast from Spectrum News.
Over one more. What was that?
So this was actually filmed a few weeks ago, and I believe that there are portions that were.
I know at North Rose Woolkit Central School District, Deputy Rob Manzal's job isn't just about security.
Hello?
Not only does he work to build relationships with our students and our families, but also with our school staff, I think that was like a true step, was like your relationship with him too. Yeah.
As a school resource officer, those relationships are important. How's lunch? I don't know what you're going to give. We were multiple ads inside here. Women, then sheriff deputy, next, I'm a counselor, a parent, you don't know my name. The sheriff's office says they're behind the names for SROs right now. Do you guys share with them?
I know when parents are dropping off their kids, picking them up, they like the presence of Deputy Manzal here. I think it just provides an extra security to know that there is an officer within the buildings in case something were to happen.
But for the time being, requests for officers or additional officers in some cases have to remain unfulfilled.
At this point, Wayne County Sheriff's Office doesn't have the staff to fulfill all of those requests right now, and as well to maintain our global.
Hey, Rob. Currently, eight school resource officers across Wayne County, but Sheriff Rob Nolte says recruitment is underway to hopefully bring back number to 15.
And we're possibly put another 12 to 13 in our academy next year. Pretty doubtful by this time next year, we'll be able to fulfill all the requests.
Hey, did you bring these up for lunch?
And for many, like 6, 3, or 4-year-olds.
Oh, and festivals down.
That's a good bet.
Can I ask you a question, because like the dangerous stuff, and officers, like they could help you, and the train was.
Last year, he brought in a framed photo, which shows appreciation of Deputy Manzal.
He's pretty funny, and he's got these kandu stuff.
That's the most important deal of the day. Take breakfast and then lunch.
In the lunchroom, like, he would, he would joke with us.
It hurt. Hopefully you never find out.
It's the positive interactions that Deputy Manzal is for.
Positive interactions, you know. Like I said, today in this world, we're not looking on very, very well, and to actually have, you know, the interactions, hopefully we can change their perspective out there.
Because trust in safety is in you.
I want these families to know that when they send their children off to these buildings, that there's someone here to make sure they're home.
And Wayne County and Spectrum News.
Yeah, so that, that piece was broadcast today, so there's a few different versions out of it because there was quite a bit of footage that a reporter had to condense down. But we're very proud of Deputy Manzal, very proud of our working relationship with the sheriff's office, so we thought that that would be something because honestly, I've said this before, for our school district, safety and security have been a priority all along. So you should be recognized for that effort as well, so thank you for that and continue to work for our school resource officer program.
We'll move on to reports and correspondence. Linda, do you have anything to report from the elementary school?
Well, now it's my turn to apologize because of returns, because of my personal schedule and the schedule of the elementary building, I did not have an opportunity to have a face-to-face to do a review, but I do want to make the correction. Last month, I should have mentioned that the private project at the elementary school has been nationally recognized for its performance and, and helps that students are getting as a result. So with that correction, I feel better, but I know that things are going well, everyone's excited about the upcoming holiday and being with their families and being ready for Christmas. And I know teachers do a lot to make them feel comfortable and like school is home, but they're really looking forward to that time when they get to be with their families and to, and they'll be more in January because I'll make, hopefully our schedules will jive a little better.
Yes, well, very understandable. Thank you very much. Paul, you have something from the middle school?
On the 20th of November, the middle school had their awards ceremony, and I'm just delighted to report that 56% of the population at the middle school is either on the honor roll, high honor roll, or the principal's honor roll. Also, in that same ceremony, 24 other students got awards for things like persistence, Cougar pride, and also assistmanship. As you heard, the winter concert was a blast, everybody had a good time, and it was very, very well attended. Last week, each student at the middle school was given a questionnaire where they could fill out their goals for the next upcoming semesters. And so, to my understanding, it's also like repeated, but it was just not just an academic but social, emotional, and behavior of goals. So I thought that was kind of neat that each student was able to set their own goals at the middle school. That's what I had from the middle school, I think I could almost be on the good news.
Wonderful, thank you. Tina, do you have anything from the high school?
Been pretty busy at the high school again. True from the Wiki, addressed high school students about internet safety, and included digital footprint, how, how that footprint can impact them in the future, which is a big piece, and how to protect themselves from the danger of the cycle of, it sounds like it went where it went, was addressed through, through ninth and 10th and 11th and 12th, and I'm guessing that, you know, during that time, they were able to really cater to the needs, the ages of what's going on with students at that point. Had a National Honor Society induction, 13 students, no, wait, this one. National Honor Society induction, I'm not sure how many, 11, Scott? 12. And there were 13 students that had instant admission to FLCC when they came to do a presentation. So that's huge, I mean, when, when you think at this point, these kids already know where they're going, and they can really dedicate the rest of their senior year to getting there, committing more credit, you know, that, that's huge. We're looking forward to the Breakfast with Santa on Saturday as this, as a senior class fundraiser, and the winter concert, as Mr. Cohen said, December 15th, at 6 o'clock. And one final piece, Rotary School of the Month. In October, we have a senior, Jenna Molder, and in November, a junior, Cora Baker. So it's, it's been busy, high schools kind of rolling along, some adjustments, but it's going well.
Great, thank you. Linda, is there anything from Fort County?
Well, between the last board meeting and this board meeting, there was a presentation at OCS about security and safety, which some of we know well participated in and presented. That was really very, I realize that was great information and certainly something that's very important right now for school districts to be having focus on. The other thing is Wayne Finger Lakes OCS on Monday night approved the health plan that we're also going to be approving tonight. Their board did that, so that's kind of an update too. Legislative Committee will be meeting, the Fort County Legislative Committee will be meeting this Saturday, will be reviewing more of the proposals that will go to the state and to the federal government for consideration, and letting them know what's our priorities and things, areas that we really feel we need support for, for our students. That's it.
Yes, as a, as a whole board, we were very proud of our superintendent at the last Fort County Boards meeting. He was instrumental in doing a large part of the program and getting participants, and we basked in the score. Let's see, there's nothing on the handbook. Anything more ahead of John?
No.
Buildings and grounds, Jason?
There's not a lot of buildings and grounds. We've met a few times, and basically what we've done is tried to prioritize important things to be done in renovations throughout the district. The most important part is we're building long, medium, and short-term goals and how more, how we're going to facilitate projects in the future to be more economically efficient and work harder and are positive towards safety at every moment. So that kind of goes into the district safety committee as well, because a lot of what we're talking about in buildings and grounds are renovations that directly lead to a safer, more secure environment for our students. So I'll just jump into the safety committee as well. We've met October 26th, November 30th, and we have a meeting coming up on December 34th, as well as the Fort County Safety Meeting, which was really nice to see what other surrounding schools are doing. And I was uber proud of how, in my own personal ranking system, how we stand up against other districts because we definitely were able to spotlight a lot of positive things that our district does to protect our students. So between that and buildings and grounds, I, I feel very comfortable with the fact that we're ensuring a positive safety environment for our students to learn and grow.
Paul, Allison?
The two policies said at the first read, the insurance law we just built wasn't required out of our boards and throughout the state have to have insurance. The 15 ten, if you, if you took the time to read through that, you probably were confused at one point or another. Allison Baldwin, the rewriter, and I got confused this afternoon looking at it. But first of all, ignore the pages, okay, because it says 1 through 3, and then it'll get to 4, 4, when you can't have 4, 4, you only have 1, 4. Tina and I have said, when this thing gets condensed, it'll probably be three pages. So just ignore the page, just start and read through. And when you get to the third page, you select all cross out. And that's what happened is this, what the committee did is, we looked at 15 tens and advised them, and they had captured so much of our 3220 policy, that we said, well, let's just go by it. So that's what we've done. So that's why that third page, it looks like it's why it's even here, it's all crossed out, well, that's because that was here in OCS, and what we did as a committee is just join the two together. So if, if you're having trouble getting through that, and you wouldn't be surprised if you do, but please give me a follow-up, and I can help you walk through it. but please give me a follow-up and I can help you walk through it.
The, it was thirty, did you say thirty-two twenty?
Thirty-two twenty used to be public participation. So because of OCS, it captured so much of that, so their fifteen ten, this is what, make it one.
So you moved it into there.
So, so if we approve this, then you'll see a thirty-two twenty nine.
Is, Tina, is there any one for public access to board tonight? I'm sorry, I don't believe so. That's, no, all right, thank you. We'll move on to the consent agenda. Motion, please, to put, to approve the consent agenda. Sheldon and Jason, any discussion? The consent agenda goes through the top of page six. Okay. Um, there are no questions. All in favor of approving the consent agenda? Motion is carried. Moving to page six. Number six, policies. A motion, please, to approve the policies listed below, this is the second read. Motion, please. Linda and Tina, discussion?
Yes.
Paul?
There's one, there's one discussion I had, my apologies for not catching this on the first read, but on the very last one, fifty-six forty, smoking tobacco, the title of that actually is supposed to include vaping. It's just, we did it in the committee and somehow when we made it to the first read, it got dropped out. It's just the title. So if we can agree, I don't know if that's legal, but if we can agree to just add vaping into the title of that policy, then it's, it's good to do over there.
All right, we will. So you want the word vaping put after the word tobacco?
Yes, in fact, let me.
Okay.
It's supposed to be smoking tobacco.
What's supposed to be?
Vaping.
Okay, all right.
Very thank you.
Any other questions? All in favor of approving the second read policies as listed? Motion is carried. Under board member requests, comments, and discussions, first of all, Mr. Cohen, I, I guess Mr. Cohen to do something for us and just want to expand on that.
So Mrs. Collier had asked me to look, take a look at the hybrid options for future board meetings. So whether the board is in person or if for unforeseen circumstances, the weather changes, you know, we had to pivot to a remote setting. So we're in the beginning stages of exploring what our options are, whether we do something with the board in person and then we stream for the public to participate, or whether there's a combination of things where, you know, we allow some people to be in person and other people to be in the virtual world, or in some cases, if we have to go through, go completely remote due to inclement weather, so no one has to put themselves at risk. She's asked me to explore that. And currently, the hybrid option is a valid option according to the Commissioner of Education. If we have people that are in public forum or at the school, we have to give access just like we would at, at any other board meeting. If we have people who are participating from home, we have to publish the location of where they're actually participating from so that we give equal opportunity for our public to participate from one of those locations as well. So I've got to do a little bit more work on what our options are, but I do believe the Board of Education is seeing the benefits of our remote option because we had great, greater public participation when people could jump in from the comforts of their home and attend and participate in a board meeting. And I do believe that at some point, our string of good weather will run out and that we will have to deal with some, some snow. So we do want to continue to foster that relationship where our public can participate. And for those people who are here in present, give them that option. For those who would participate from home, give them that luxury as well. And I, I do believe that we're close to coming up with some sort of consensus as to what it is that I can bring back to the board and let you all fully discuss and decide how you want to move forward. But I believe in this day and age, the more we can stick to a regular schedule and have regular board meetings, the better off we are rather than cancel. And then giving people options for how they participate, I also think is a very good thing. So I will continue to do that and I will update you in a Friday newsletter as to what I find.
Board members, do any of you have any objections to this? I'd really, if, if you're, if you're okay with moving forward, I'd really like to have this in place for the Janeburg meeting. And I don't think it needs a board vote unless any of you have issues with, with this scenario.
I remember that we've had instances where board members have joined a meeting by Zoom when they're not able to be here or they're out of state or, you know, and that has always been good for the board member because you're not behind and you're, you're still working and, and you're aware. I, I see the value of it for the community as well.
I think what Mr. Cohen is looking into is what's allowed now under the open meetings law. It is different than it was during COVID. We had more later too. So we want to be sure that we're compliant. Okay. The other thing, board members, I wanted to be sure to announce to you if you haven't, if you do have Tuesday night coming up, the thirteenth, open, which not many things are open these days. There is a Ford County Zoom meeting from six-thirty to seven-thirty. It's a professional development. Either let Tina know, she can call it in to sue, or you can, you can email Sue yourself. And I'm, I email her myself, so whichever way you want, but do remember that. Does, do any other board members have anything they want to add to this time? All right. Moving on to good news, just any of, we had a lot of good news tonight. And I'm really super happy that we had good news concerning the music department, the community schools, the, all of the things in the strategic plan that the high school was working on, and a lot of fantastic news. Anybody have anything to add? Paul?
Yeah, in addition to those fall teams, that's fantastic development for us to tell about that great team. So we had some for soccer, women and men's, we had all county. So for the women's, we have Bradley Batso, they have Tori Cooper, and, oh, I'm sorry, and Gabby and Kupinda all made all county. And then for men's soccer, J D One, Bush and Mattro were all county first team. And then all county's second team, Gilbert Seager, Jay Anthony, Nick Gil.
Thank you. Then moving on, that completes our agenda. I'll entertain the motion, please, to. Oh, oh, sorry, that's it, you're right.
I don't know if Paul said that we had a second team, you know, first team, first is on cross country, high school boys, or real speed, it's fever.
That completes our agenda right now. The board is going to be moving into executive session. All right, we're back in the session. We're back into session. I'll call us back to order. We have two things we have to do. First, we have to put this on the agenda and then we will, and the motion needs to So first of all, I need a motion to resolve that the Board of Education have had recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and Pursuit of Education Law accepts the addition to the December eighth, two thousand twenty-two meeting agenda. A motion, please. Paul and Linda? Any discussion? All in favor of putting this on the agenda? Motion is carried. And now a motion, I ask for a motion for approval of the item listed below under additions to the agenda. And I will, I will read it. So a motion, please, to put this motion in. And the motion is, result, the Board of Education of North Rose Woke Central School District approves the written agreement between the Superintendent of Schools and an employee of the district executed on December two, twenty twenty-two, and December one, twenty twenty-two respectively, and the reservation of such employee effective December thirty-one, twenty twenty-two. A motion, please. Any discussion? All in favor? Is there any other business? No. That completes our agenda. Motion, please, to adjourn. John and Paul? All in favor? Motion carried. This meeting is adjourned.